Good evening. Oh, this is right, we can't hear. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 2nd. We previously met in executive session for consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or an official, or the investigation of charges of complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student unless the employee, official, licensee, or student requests a public hearing and for consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding and for conference with the board's attorney to discuss matters that are subject to pending or imminent court action. Now we return to public session and would invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we move to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Zeeman, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Ms. Clark Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mrs. Dobbins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll move to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Next we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening again. President Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, distinguished board members, Treasurer Zeeman. It is my pleasure to introduce to the podium Dr. Badat. He will be sharing with us West Shore's Resilient Ranger and then also an update on West Shore.
Good evening, President.
Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, members of the board, Superintendent Nedzwicki, and Treasurer Zeeman. Thank you for giving us this opportunity this evening to provide you with an update on the West Shore Career Technical District. At West Shore, we're not only preparing students for graduation, but we are preparing students for the future. And this evening, we'll share with you two new programs and review how those new programs will prepare our students for the future. But before we begin into our presentation, I do want to pause and recognize a special young man that I've had the pleasure of knowing for the last four years. Gavin, can you please come up here so I can read something to you and to the board? You often hear the African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." And in this case, Gavin, this is very much true. Over the past four years, I've had the pleasure of watching you grow. When you came to us in West Shore, you were timid and unsure. However, with the support of your teachers, Mr. Popeo, Mrs. Ward, and his parents, Gavin has transformed into a confident young man, and I'm very, very proud of you. The village also includes Gavin. We need to give Gavin some credit because Gavin recognized that he needed to hear what others had to say. And through that growth, through that listening, through those triumphs, through that growth, he has developed into one of our best students in the Sports and Excite Science Program. And like I said, I couldn't be more proud of him. Gavin's story reminds us that growth isn't always loud. It's quiet, it's consistent, and it's full of perseverance. Through challenges, you showed up. And again, I'm proud of you and we welcome you here on the podium and say thank you for being a stellar student in all sports and excite science. Great job, buddy.
Here's a certificate for you. Do you have any folks with you here tonight?
My parents, my aunt, my uncle, my grandma and grandpa.
Wonderful. Can you join us up there in front of the backdrop for a photo?
Can we get grandpa too?
Yeah. Come on.
Let the family.
Definitely everybody.
You know better than to hide from the board, Mr. Weisler.
Before I turn it over to our educators this evening, I do also want to have some celebrations with the board. This evening, we celebrate our most recent report card. For the last three years, the West Shore Career Technical District has achieved a five-star rating, so very proud of our students and our staff. We also want to celebrate our enrollment. Over the last few years, our enrollment has increased, and in fact, next year, our enrollment is also going to be slightly higher than what it was this year. In fact, last year at this time, we had a total of 232 applications into West Shore, and this year, right now, we have 268. So again, really excited about these opportunities that our students are going to receive. We also want to celebrate our academic achievement, in particular, our West Shore senior students. This year, we had a total of 170 seniors, and of those 170 seniors, 168 of them passed their pathways, which shows that they are proficient in those technical programs. So again, really proud of our students. We also want to celebrate our welding program with our teacher, Mr. Joseph Zernich, which you'll hear shortly. We're really excited to have him onboard. He comes with us from a diverse experience, and our students are really lucky to learn from him and very excited that he's part of our team. We also want to celebrate and recognize our MEMS program that's led by Mr. Kyle White. And Mr. White actually did a lot this year. He was our engineering teacher at the high school and also a high school math teacher, all while building this MEMS program from the bottom. And he's developed a lot of local partnerships and national partnerships, so we're very, very happy to have him and thankful for his commitment to the MEMS program. And so now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Joseph Zernich, who will talk to you a little bit about welding and show some demonstrations.
Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate being here and seeing this ceremony for the Resilient Ranger, and I am excited to produce a welding resilient ranger for you guys in the future. And who will help me do this are these individuals, these post-secondary colleges. And these employment opportunities all within the community. I have these five colleges that will be represented on our welding advisory committee, and these five employment companies that are also on our advisory committee. About four or five of these individuals are local residents within our community, so I try to keep it as close to our community as possible. And I just wanted to stop a couple more that I didn't put on there. We have the sheet metal workers that will be represented in our advisory committee, the ironworkers, Local 17, Korseki Welding, Lincoln Electric, Lakewood's Maintenance Department, Carl's Custom Welding, and Aerotech. So we're going to have a diverse advisory committee to help give our students opportunities in the welding industry. So with these companies, along with our equipment here, this is a compact Vertex. This machine helps students who are intimidated with welding. And what this machine does is like their junior year, I can give students WPSs and welding procedure specifications and different welding joint designs to produce a weld. Like this is a T-joint that a student would weld in a welding booth that they would do here on the Vertex. What's cool with the screen, you can see the T-joint is here, and I can actually see this as a student is welding. And then we have a different screen that shows their metrics that gives the grading rubrics for the student's welds. And in the beginning, students struggle in the beginning, and as they become proficient with this machine, their welds, their scores get higher, and then that translates into welding booth. And then we have the VR view. When I put the headset on, when I come in here and weld, you guys will see what this environment will look like. So I'm going to do a little weld, and I'm going to ask Ms. Katzenberger, come on up. Place the screen here for you guys, so you guys can watch. I'm going to strike a little arc. You guys will see how I adjust the angles and stuff, and then I'm going to just go halfway, and then this Katzenberger is going to finish the weld. Yeah, just kind of watch, see how I set this up. So, right now, what you guys can see in my hand here is this is the electrode welder, and this is the electrodes we're doing stick welding. When I come down, you can see the T-joints in front of me, right? You want to come in with your electrode at a 45-degree angle with about a 30-degree travel angle, and you want to hold at about an eighth of an inch arc length. So when I come in and strike the arc, I start welding. You got to try to stay in nice, consistent travel speed. Try to keep these angles as we're going down the plate, and stay in position right in the middle of the two plates to weld the joint together. Okay? So when you see the weld, right? Sure what I do is to show you the different view. So there's the weld I just placed on there. And we hit action cue, clean stick, new stick and clean. You see what we're looking for. So now, we're going to learn how to restart a weld.
Okay.
So we're going to strike the arc right here, and then carry the weld and finish the plate.
Okay.
So go ahead and put this on. Do you guys have a scene, or are you seeing it right now? So I'm going to help you, guide you. So I'm going to bring you into position, okay? If I can bring you into position.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So we're going to come in. Are we right where it starts?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to start that arc. Nice, slow, steady, steady, steady. Try to keep the angles consistent. Try to stay right within the joints. Try to go at a good travel speed all the way down the plate. As you can see, welding is actually a lot of patience for this.
Very cool.
Awesome. There you go. That looks pretty great. See how it did? Let's take a look, right? So let's clean the weld, right? And it looks pretty good, right?
Yeah.
Nice. And now we're going to end pass 90.
Yay!
This is what all the students will learn welding with before they actually get into welding.
I believe it was 70 in the beginning. I agree.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate you coming on and now bringing it to Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So before I get going, just a little bit of extra information. Slides all go through around the top, and then there's two different flyers we created. One says that it's parents and students, and then the other is in potential industry partners.
Good evening, everyone. Members of the board, district leaders, and honored guests, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Kyle White, and as the instructor of our new Micro-Electromechanical Systems, or MEMS, program, I'm excited to share a vision with you, not just of what's happening in our classrooms today, but of a future we're building together. I guess we should start with what exactly are MEMS? Imagine a device so small, it's invisible to the naked eye, built at a scale of up to 100,000 times smaller than a human hair. Yet these tiny marvels power some of the most sophisticated technologies surrounding us every day. These are Micro-Electromechanical Systems, or MEMS. These miniature machines combine electrical and mechanical components into one. They're embedded in smartphones that connect us, in cars that move us, in medical devices that save lives, and in the industrial equipment that drives our economy. MEMS are the invisible heroes of modern technology, enabling sensors that detect, actuators that respond, and controls that deliver precision in ways once thought impossible. The future waits for no one, and neither will our students. At West Shore and throughout Lakewood City Schools, we believe in the vision of a Lakewood Ranger, a student who leads with integrity, embraces challenges with courage, and shapes the future through effort, curiosity, and character. Our MEMS students will embody that vision every day. They'll collaborate in teams to design real-world MEMS applications, think critically to troubleshoot systems with a focus on quality and safety, and communicate professionally through clear documentation and thoughtful feedback. They'll master industry tools from clean room procedures to precision soldering, and will take ownership of their futures by connecting classroom learning and careers in semiconductors and advanced manufacturing. This program will be more than a course. It will be a launchpad. Students will graduate with valuable industry credentials, Microsoft Office and Team Certification for Digital Fluency, OSHA Safety Certifications for Workplace Safety Knowledge, and the J-Standard 001 Soldering Certification for Precision Assembly Skills. Each credential will signal to employers that our students are ready to contribute from day one. But our students won't walk this path alone. We've already assembled a team of strong, a strong and growing team of partners to support their journey. Lorain County Community College has guided development of our curriculum, provided access to their clean room facilities, and will offer students opportunities to earn college credit. Team Neo has connected us with leading regional employers such as Rockwell Automation, Swagelock, Telos Communications, and Repairbit, building clear pathways to meaningful careers. Through the Spark Photonics Foundation, a Department of Defense-supported initiative, our students will gain exposure to cutting-edge fields like lasers, optics, and microfabrication. The SEMI Foundation will help us stay aligned with national workforce development efforts, ensuring our program remains at the forefront of semiconductor and MEMS industry needs. And this is a living partnership. As the industry evolves, so will our team. We'll continue to welcome new voices, embrace emerging technologies, and open new doors, keeping our students' future ready, not just for today, but for what's next. This program is about much more than earning a diploma. It's about empowering students with the confidence, skills, and certifications to step boldly into high-demand and high-tech careers. Our students will become innovators, driving economic growth, supporting national security, and pushing boundaries of what technology can achieve. They won't just be prepared to enter the workforce, they'll be prepared to lead within it, because that's the essence of being a Lakewood Ranger: prepared, passionate, and proud. Thank you very much for your continued support. The future is bright, and our students will be ready to meet it head-on.
Before we close, just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for always investing in Career Tech. Thank you for that support, and our students' future is very, very bright. Thank you.
Dr. Badat, I just want to thank you for your leadership. What a wonderful program we have, and we're just so fortunate to have it right here in Lakewood, West Shore Career Tech, you know, and have those surrounding districts coming to us. A wonderful partnership, and so congratulations to you, and thank you to our educators for your commitment to our kids, making them job-ready or ready for their future in those broad range of fields. So again, thank you.
Thank you. We don't get to play with that later.
Yeah.
Mrs. Katzenberger wanted to be one of you.
Okay, take it home for her one night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Now we'll move on to the discussion of agenda items for the second regular monthly meeting. First up is the finance report from Mrs. Clark Sutton. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, anybody who, everybody is welcome to stay for the business of the meeting, but if you'd like to exit, please feel free to do so. Thank you. Thank you so much. It was lovely to see you.
We'll see you based on family. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think we can move on. Now, we can move on to the discussion of agenda items for the second regular monthly meeting, starting with the finance report. Ms. Clark Sutton.
Thank you and good evening. Okay, so the Standing Committee Investments Purchased and Matured for April of 2025. The tables that are included in the agenda materials identify investments that matured as well as outstanding investments as of April 2025. Investment earnings for regular board funds for the month of April totaled $233,559, bringing the year-to-date total to $2,722,837. The financial information for the month of April 2025. The general fund receipts totaled $1.9 million and more, and general fund expenditures totaled $6.8 million and some change. The 2025 fiscal year summary includes revenues and expenditures. The revenues, year-to-date actual and projected revenues through April show a positive $375,927 variance compared to the five-year forecast. Always good to have. There are some noted variances. Interest income is exceeding fiscal year 25's estimates, contributing to the positive overall variance. In expenditures, our year-to-date actual and projected expenditures through April show a positive $57,185 variance compared to the five-year forecast. The variance is that employee benefits are contributing to the positive variance. The change to the Great Lakes Council of Government has proven to be a positive change for both employee and financial benefits, which is awesome, and thank you, Mr. Zeeman, for advocating for that and shepherding it through, for that change. Cash reserves and compliance items. Cash reserves are sufficient through fiscal year 2026. A financial summary report is provided to show the monthly and fiscal year-to-date cash position for the non-general funds maintained by the district. Appropriation modifications will ensure the district is in compliance with the state auditor's office and the county fiscal office. All accounts have sufficient funds available to cover the increase in the appropriations. The amendment increases allow the district to legally encumber and pay funds up to the amounts appropriated. The permanent appropriations reflect the current five-year forecast. The appropriations reflect our commitment to providing an excellent education at a prudent and community-sensitive level. The general fund is showing an increase of 4.55% compared to fiscal year 2025, which is in line with current inflationary increases. The fiscal year 2026 appropriations are just one part of the ongoing discussion of the financial condition of the district. In another item, we are being asked to look at the Lakewood Public Library budget. Their budget document for fiscal year 2025 is provided for review and consideration as part of the official budget hearing process required by statute. This proposed budget must be adopted by the Board of Education no later than July 15th and forwarded to the County Budget Commission prior to July 20th as required by Ohio Revised Code. And we will be voting on it on June 16th, and so we'll be well within the deadline. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we will move on to building sites and major purchases with Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. President Katzenberger, we have five items for our consideration for action at our next meeting. The first is a resolution to approve the agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Auxilio Services Incorporated. Superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with Auxilio Services to provide and manage people transportation for field trips at a rate of $78 per hour plus 90 cents per mile with a three-hour minimum per field trip where vehicles are available for such trips. Rates are inclusive of all expenses, including driver, fuel, insurance, et cetera. The second item is a resolution to approve the contract between the Lakewood Board of Education and RightWay Transportation. Superintendent recommends approval of the agreement with RightWay to provide transportation services for athletic and general student field trips at a rate of $85 per hour. The third is a resolution to approve a lease agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Norfolk Southern Railway Company. The company is the owner of real property located at Mile Post B189.70. The lease agreement is for a six-year contract beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2023. Is this the Garfield site? Thank you. And I know Mr. Zeeman has put a good amount of work into this, so thank you for that as well. Moving on to the next item, a resolution to approve service agreement between the Lakewood City School District and Connect. The agreement between Connect and the Lakewood City Schools for three years affords the district the ability to lock in core services fees at no increase for the duration of the contract. Core services include access to Munis Financial ERP subscription. Core services include access to munis, financial, ERP subscription, internet services, data center, infrastructure, and cybersecurity. Additional services include support for Infinite Campus and IEP Anywhere Plus. And finally, a resolution to approve the agreement between the Board and Cuyahoga Community College. This is a facilities use agreement with Cuyahoga Community College. They will rent two classrooms, 104 and 106, reception area, and designated office space at, right here at TAFT Center for Innovation for their Tri-C Aspire Program. Program will consist of basic skills, ESOL, and adult secondary education coursework. Term is for one year, beginning July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, to be billed quarterly at $7,500 per quarter for a total of $30,000 for the 12-month period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the education report with Mrs. Dotman.
We have eleven items today. I know. First, the handbooks for the 25-26 school year are being submitted for yearly approval. Next, the City of Lakewood Police Department Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program. An annual resolution to support the grant application submitted by the City of Lakewood Police Department for funding from Ohio for the city's DARE program. It also commends the police department for continued efforts to educate young people of Lakewood as to the hazards of alcohol and drugs. We have a resolution to approve membership in the Alliance for High Quality Education for the 25-26 school year. The district has been a member of this organization for many years as these participating districts have banded together to positively impact state school funding, student academic measures, and other important educational initiatives affecting Ohio's pre-K through 12th grade public school districts. Approval of this resolution is requested to authorize the district's continuing participation in the alliance. We have a memorandum of understanding between College Now Greater Cleveland and Lakewood High School. Contracting with College Now provides a vital position at LHS, serving college-bound students. Mrs. Sandoval, the College Now counselor assigned to LHS helps students apply for financial aid, secure waivers for application fees and admission testing fees, publishes a scholarship bulletin, and helps students navigate the college selection process. This program will be funded by Lakewood City Schools at a rate of $500 per day for fifty days. We have an agreement between Lakewood Board of Education and the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. The Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio provides special education services to students whose needs require specialized services outside of Lakewood City Schools through positive education program for the 25-26 school year. We have a resolution to approve agreement with Active Internet Technologies. Active Internet Technologies, known as Final Site, provides the district with content management system, websites allowing the district to have a web-based presence in order to share out information and content. The Lakewood City Schools previously used School Point as a content management system, which was then purchased by Final Site before the 23-24 school year. We are in the final year of our initial three-year agreement with Final Site. And we have an agreement between Lakewood Board of Education and Healthcare Process Consulting Incorporated. The district has been using these services of healthcare process consulting for purposes of filing Medicaid reimbursements for special education ancillary services, ancillary services through Ohio Medicaid Program, School Program. Approval of this agreement will allow HPC to continue to serve as our claims filing processor for three years from July 1, 25, through June 30, 28. The annual cost of this contract will be $29,000. We have a memorandum of understanding between the Lakewood Board of Education and Asian Services in Action for EL Summer School 2025. Lakewood City Schools has been working with Asian Services in Action to provide services to our EL students in summer school. This contract represents a continuation of the academic support afforded to our students during the summer of 2025. In addition, opportunities for EL teach, student teaching experiences are provided by the partner organizations. Specific arrangements for programming were developed through conversation between Asian Services in Action staff and our district personnel. We have an agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Education Alternatives for Day Treatment Program. Education Alternatives will provide special education instruction in a day treatment setting to students whose needs require specialized services outside of Lakewood City Schools for the 25-26 school year. And we have an agreement between Lakewood Board of Education and Education Alternatives for Transportation Services. Education Alternatives will provide transportation services for Lakewood students attending EA Day Treatment facilities for the 25-26 school year. Education Alternatives can provide this transportation as a more cost-effective alternative to their school than our regular transportation providers. And finally, a gift to Lakewood Schools. Edward Dink donated 350 tree seedlings for the purpose of being distributed to all third graders in each of the elementary schools, and an anonymous donation of $250 to the art department at Lincoln Elementary School. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. We don't have a policy report tonight, so the next report is Human Resources with Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you very much. In two weeks, we'll be considering ninety-three certified appointments. Creation and education, thirty-seven athletics, four athletics, one for fitness facility, and twenty-four programs. We'll also be considering a resolution to approve an addendum to the master service agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and the Ohio Central Strategic Services and Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. We will be considering a resolution to approve an addendum to the master service agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Rachel Wixian Associates, Associates, Dedicated School Staffing. We'll be considering a resolution for the approval of a revised administrative team benefit package and a resolution for approval of a revised 12-month non-represented benefit program.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our communications portion of the meeting, starting with Board of Education comments. Does any of my colleagues have anything they would like to contribute?
I'll start if I could.
Please do.
Thank you. President Katzenberger, I just wanted to recognize the graduating class of 2025. It was a wonderful commencement ceremony. We just appreciate them and congratulations to everybody who really worked on the commencement ceremony and of course, everyone involved in educating these graduates through their, through their time here in Lakewood. They'll make us proud and that was a wonderful ceremony. Also want to just recognize those award recipients at Celebration of Excellence. Again, another time-honored tradition here. Wonderful accolades to all those students who've worked so hard, so. Hope everyone had a wonderful, you know, end to the, to the school year and a safe summer. Thank you.
I was able to attend Aunt Roosevelt's House Cup and I saw Mrs. Clark Sutton there. I don't know if anyone else was. I really look forward to seeing this kind of pushed out to all the schools. It was such a fun afternoon with their parade and their karaoke, their sweet Justin Timberlake wig. It was my favorite part, but it was a lot of fun. So I'm really glad that they have brought this to our district. I think it's going to be really beneficial for everybody. And thanks to all of our staff for such a successful year.
So ditto for Mr. Callahan's comments about all of the wonderful things and it was fun at Roosevelt. So happy summer vacation to our students and, and then all of the logistics that families will be managing over the next couple of months. But, so be safe. Please, 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 drivers, slow down. Please make full stops. Please look in all directions before you move forward. We are a densely populated community and we need to look out for each other. And as students are out and there are no more school zones for the summer, we, they're on their bikes, we want them outside and we want them outside with their families. So please, please, please be careful when you are driving and be aware that we are a densely packed community. And happy summer.
Just another couple of comments on the, oh, thank you. I'm so glad I have a friend over here next to me. To comment on, first of all, the student speakers, there were two great student speakers, Camden Fegley and Ayudelay Adigan. And it was fun to hear him allude to the resilience that he learned in his four years at the high school and something that we've been talking more and more about, especially this year. And it was great. And then the music provided by the Chamber Orchestra and the choir was, is always excellent, but it was, I just, it deserves a comment and they gave up time on Sunday and it was great.
Thank you. Yeah, I was fortunate to have spent some significant time at the Civic Auditorium over the last week for the Celebration of Excellence. And then the music, actually, I was in the cafeteria. The music department has their awards ceremony and banquet and then also the spring sports celebration where we were fortunate to receive regular updates of the baseball score. Congratulations to our team from their championship, district championship. And then, of course, commencement yesterday where I had my first opportunity to hand out diplomas and I can't say enough about how poised and gracious all of our graduates were and so many thank yous and just so polite and wonderful. So, and you know, to echo Mrs. Shaughnessy's comments about the orchestra and all the people who, behind the scenes, who put so much effort into making that a beautiful ceremony and so organized and flawless and all the parents and community members and teachers and administrators who got everybody to that point in their lives. It's a beautiful, special day. So thank you to everybody who did that.
The auditorium was full.
The auditorium was absolutely packed to the rafters. I've never seen every single seat taken and a lot of very joyous family members, so that was really wonderful. And yes, happy summer, everybody be safe. Enjoy the pool and all aquatic members we approved today, so. So I think that's it. I don't think we have any public comments today, so that means we'll be moving on to other board business. And the first item is, both items are Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you. The first item is a certified action. It's been asked that we approve this on one reading and there it's one resignation for purpose of retirement and one administrator contract. And I move adoption of the resolution.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Zeeman, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Ms. Clark Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan. Aye. Mrs. Dotman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
If there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
We did it again, boss.
One, two, three, go.